All right, good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, February 11th School Board Meeting. I call it to order at this point. I want to start by reading the vision and the mission of Pinellas County Schools. Our vision is 100% student success and our mission is to educate and prepare each student for college, career, and life. And while we go through the business of this meeting, we will keep those two things in mind as we make all of our decisions. Thank you. Our invocation today is by Pastor Steven or Steve Ezra from Aldersgate United Methodist Church. We'll follow it with the Pledge of Allegiance and then the National Anthem that will be performed by the Concert Chorus of Pinellas Park High School. After they do the National Anthem, their conductor or their court director will introduce the next song that they're going to be singing. So, and that will be Helen Twynum, their chorus director. So if you would stand with me for the pledge. Let's go with the invocation first. Thank you.
Please join me as you desire in an attitude of prayer. God of us all, you have called all people to lives of righteousness and justice. You have called all people to live lives of peace and wholeness. We confess that sometimes we have cared more for lofty places than we have for places of service. We confess that sometimes we have worked more for power than we have for purpose. And we confess that sometimes we promote our own agendas over the common good. Forgive us, we pray. Bless now those who gather in this place. Give the gifts of discernment. Give the gifts of wisdom. Give the gifts of vision. To those who lead here, grant the patience of cooperation. To those who debate here, grant clarity of thought. To those who decide here, grant the courage of truth. Bless the members of this school board. Give them the gift of oversight that they might honor your will as they strive for your children. Guide them as they work towards the purpose of shaping the intellectual and civic lives of your children. Unite us with all people of goodwill, both in this place and beyond, in order that our schools might be a signal of hope and fulfillment. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. My name is Helen Twynum. I'm the very proud choral director of the Pinellas Park High School Patriot Singers, the group before yours Concert Chorus. Our next piece is entitled "Sleep" by Eric Whitaker, so please enjoy.
sleep where clouds of jungle tree gives us sight. What trees make way of dark and deep, of dying winds that soar in me?
Thank you for the Concert Chorus. Thank you, the Concert Chorus from Pinellas Park High School and also Ms. Twynum. I believe Pastor Ezra left already, but if he is out in the area, we thank him for being here to bring the invocation as well. As Dr. Grego has said, teachers are the superheroes of Pinellas County Schools and our community. They work tirelessly each and every day for their students and families and rarely seek recognition for themselves. Recently, we had the opportunity to thank our teachers and to celebrate the teaching profession at the 2020 Evening of Excellence hosted by the Education Foundation, the Pinellas Education Foundation. It was an uplifting event recognizing all of the work of our schoolteachers and the Teachers of the Year and announcing the District Teacher of the Year, Mr. David Martinez Cooley. Let's watch the highlights of the event that honored the truly remarkable teachers that we have in Pinellas County Schools.
Every day should be Teacher of the Year in Pinellas County Schools. Teachers are the heartbeat of this district and we're just so excited to have the opportunity to celebrate them.
Tonight is a really exciting night when we can all come together and celebrate the good work that goes on in Pinellas. The teachers that are here deserve our recognition, but they represent so many outstanding people. We're just thrilled to be able to spend the day and say, "Thank you for all your wonderful work. You're outstanding."
However, what's really important is that we represent the profession and the principals who are here, and this is a community celebration of education.
Wow, it feels amazing to represent High Point this year. I can't tell you how many wonderful staff members we have and to be picked as somebody to come and represent is just truly an honor.
I believe because my peers nominated me for doing a great job, working with teachers, as well as been going into the classroom and working with them, as well as often instructional strategies that can help them, as well as help myself.
Well, we talk a lot about, you know, how to retain teachers and so this emerging teacher category is new.
I'm just really lucky. I have the most amazing team. To go into teaching and go in with that team, I just, I'm just so fortunate. I'm really blessed.
We all have the power to impact the lives of others, but outside of family, teachers have the greatest influence in the life of a child. You know, great teachers are the ones who go above and beyond on a daily basis without seeking the acknowledgement and the awards. So the winner of the Teacher of the Year is David Martinez.
Still stunned, but also very proud to be up there with those nine other finalists and the 130 that were up there. Every school has amazing teachers and we're all Teachers of the Year. I'm just proud to represent the county and especially the music educators throughout the county. It is, I feel a lot of pressure, but it just, it's a challenge. So now I need to make sure every day I'm better than yesterday. It's amazing. They, they gave me a chance. I was a high school math teacher with elementary music certification and Jean gave me a shot and the administration and staff at Bel Air welcomed me and helped me figure out the ropes. I think that's where I learned how to be a good music teacher. It's just, I've been at two schools with amazing staffs that came out tonight and my math connections and all the music teachers rooting for me. I appreciate all of that support.
And that was just a little clip of how exciting it was. And congratulations again to our outstanding Teacher of the Year. We hope to hear more about him as he moves on to the state level. All right, we'll have the introduction of professional and community organizations representatives. Isabella Mascheranes, our Public Information Officer. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grego and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing Pinellas County Council PTA, Adeline Joseph Theophil. Representing SEIU, Rebecca Dean. And with the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, we have Mike Andalfo, President. Today, we will have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome from Pinellas Park High School, Eon Nguyen, Ananda Myers, Carla Chavez, and their principal is also here, Brett Patterson. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. We are your shining patriots representing Pinellas Park High School.
I'm your red patriot, Ananda Myers.
I am your blue patriot, Eon Nguyen.
And I'm your white patriot, Carla Chavez.
And together, we are here to tell you the things that make our school. Oh yes, our school is the best, the best.
To start off, the students at Pinellas Park High School are motivated, cheerful, and full of school spirit. We love to represent our school every opportunity we can, whether it be field trips, homecoming, or football games. Literally every event we go to, you can hear us sing our school chant. We are always proud to show our patriot pride. Pinellas Park High School is also home to the Criminal Justice Academy and the First Responders National Guard Center for Emergency. They offer many extracurricular activities and opportunities for our students' futures. For example, they offer certifications like CPR and FEMA. We build connections with other teachers and our students who share the same interests as us. Being in a magnet program means we are held to a higher standard, so we get to be around students who are just as motivated and willing to learn like us.
Our school is known for our diversity. Each class consists of various ethnicities and cultures. For example, I am a Jamaican girl and my best friends are Vietnamese, Puerto Rican, Mexican, and Italian. Each day, I learn more and more about their cultures. For example, my Vietnamese friend teaches me about their cultures and cuisines. I even learned their language and how to say hello. Xin Gao. Our school is very inclusive. Everybody has a group, organization, or club that they are involved in where they all feel accepted. I, for example, was just accepted into the varsity flag football team. In privacy, I played golf in the beginning of the year. It was a sport I never knew about or even imagined I could play. However, once I started, I felt so included and felt like I had another family. There are so many programs at our school teaching the values of love and inclusiveness. We have a growing gay, straight alliance, avid, and even a principal's multicultural advisory.
Our school has so many resources and opportunities that are here for the students to succeed. To start off, we have a learning success lab that's completely run by students. Their learning success lab is open during lunch and after school and is here to help students struggling in subjects areas to be tutored by student tutors. Almost all teachers have hours after school or even during their lunches to help students succeed. They really put an emphasis on student-teacher relationships. We also have a SAT bootcamp that goes on for the whole year. Students who do not have enough resources at home have a food and resource closet at our school that they can get their resources they need to learn. There are no words to describe the overall sense of home that our school gives us. Every time we are on break or off for a prolonged period of time, when we return, our school feels like home. It feels like a safe place for us to stay at. My hypothesis for this is the overall structure of our school. It's one large building with multiple wings that extend off, so it feels like one nice big mansion where we're all family members staying together. And of course, there are days where I feel like I don't want to go to school and like, of course, I feel tired sometimes, but I kid you not, I am genuinely happy to be here. We are one big family and I am proud to say that I am a patriot. And these are the reasons why. Oh yes, our school is the best, the best. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much for your energetic and very interesting report that you have. Mr. Patterson, would you like to stand up and wave to the crowd and let them know how proud you are of the students that are there? As well as your first responders that came in support of them? And I said, and your first responders? Yep, and if the first responders would like to stand also, we'd like to recognize you. You came to support your fellow students. Good, thank you, thank you. All right, we'll move on now to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda or any items board members would like to pull from the consent agenda at this point? Dr. Grego?
There's, there are no amendments to the agenda.
Okay, and board members? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move approval of the adoption of the agenda, Ms. Long.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the adoption of the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. And we will move on. Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. The very first item under special order agenda is a presentation of the Proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month, February 2020. This is, Ms. Long, is this the one you have?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Long, would you like to read it for us?
Do you want to go?
Hi, good morning. You're gonna deprive me of my opportunity.
And I apologize.
That's all right. Ms. Cook, board members, Dr. Grego and staff, February is Career and Technical Education Month and the displays you saw this morning out in front of the building represent just a few of the CTE programs we offer our students across the county. Everyone needs a career that will provide the resources for home, food, and security. The path to a career begins in elementary school where our students engage in one of the over 260 STEM academies across the district. Students learn the importance of math and science in their everyday life and begin exploring the various career paths from engineering to healthcare. Each of our fifth grade students experience Enterprise Village where they learn about the economic system and apply those principles while working and running businesses in the village. This exploration continues in middle school where students begin to develop career goals and establish a career personality. Career academies in middle and high school connect students to academics through embedding the academy theme throughout their day. Academy themes such as aerospace, health occupations, automotive technology, finance, and advanced information technology create a sense of belonging and ownership to each individual's learning. Our data proves that students who are involved in academies attend school more regularly, have a higher grade point average, and graduate on time. This year, over 1,500 students will participate in career, tech, career and technical student organizations demonstrating their technical skill and leadership learned in those programs. Business Leaders of America, Health Occupation Student Association, and Skills USA are some of the programs that they participate in. The competitions afford students the opportunity to demonstrate proficiency in those technical skills and leadership qualities on a state and national stage. Last summer, nearly 200 high school students participated in internships in a wide variety of workplaces such as bank tellers, IT support, construction trades, teacher assistants, and healthcare assistants. The career goals students set lead to a variety of post-secondary education pursuits and on February 21st, we will celebrate National Technical Signing Day where high school students and their parents commit to attending Pinellas Technical College next year to continue their path to achieve their goals. Technical colleges, state colleges, and universities play critical roles in the highly technical marketplace and our students are prepared to meet this challenge through internships, industry certifications, and a well-defined education plan. Now for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas profound economic and technical changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, placing new and additional responsibilities on our education system. And whereas the efforts of career and technical educators with business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for careers that are forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. And whereas, career and technical education serves as the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas, career and technical education provides Floridians with the school-to-careers connection, helping students experience practical and meaningful application of any number of skills. And whereas, more than 415,000 secondary job preparation and 185,000 post-secondary career and technical education students in Florida engage in this type of meaningful education. And whereas, secondary schools in all 67 school districts, all 28 Florida colleges and 48 technical colleges offer career and technical education courses. And whereas, more than 430,000 secondary CTE students are enrolled in one of over 2,060 registered career and professional education academies and more than 15,300 registered career-themed courses. And whereas, Florida students have earned over 91,000 industry certifications and over 33,000 digital tool certificates. And whereas, career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills, providing career choices and potential satisfaction. Now, therefore, the Pinellas, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize February 2020 as Career and Technical Education Month. Sign this 11th day of February 2020. And Board Chair Cook, I'd just like to say a thank you. This morning was incredible. Mr. Reese, I worked with him to see drones. Man, I'm gonna get out there, one of the, I'm coming to Zelia and you're gonna teach me. Clearwater High, woodworking, my checkbook, oh, my husband's gonna go crazy, but I love wood. Just to see, I remember back in the early eighties when I taught ESE. There was nothing more important to my self-contained students than vocational training and they have done incredible things with their lives. I can't thank this department, all the wonderful things that you do. This is where it's happening. We bless you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation for the Career and Technical Education Month. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It too passes unanimously. I would like all of the people that are in the audience today that were here for the Career and Technical Showcase, you did a marvelous job this morning, but I'd like you just to stand. This is a small sampling of the people that are involved. And this proclamation. And this proclamation is recognizing the work that our staff is doing and the students that are participating. So thank you very much. Ms. Flowers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you again to all of the Pinellas Technical Trade staff, to Mr. Hunt and his administrative team, and to all of you that may currently be taking courses. I can tell you that whenever I visit, oh yeah, you can sit down. I'm sorry. I can tell you that whenever I visit the two facilities, they are always hustling and bustling with students. And I have been fortunate enough to attend the signing day at Pinellas Technical College. For the St. Petersburg campus, I was only able to attend one year in Clearwater, but to see those parents with their students, understanding that if the desire to go to college is not that student's choice, they still receive a quality education and come out of it with a technical trade that they can then become employed in a field that they love, that they want to work in. Now I have to give kudos to the Clearwater Culinary Arts Program because they make the best desserts.
And breakfasts.
And yeah, and so, yeah, I am guilty, but I just really enjoyed. And every time I see an article that talks about manufacturing jobs and technical trade jobs, I will pick up the phone and call and say, "Have you sent a representative?" a representative to Pinellas Technical College? We have students, you know? So I really want to thank you continuously, I'm always giving you kudos, but it's not to be phony, it's sincere. Because I remember when you could go to one of our technical trade schools and it was empty, a few students, maybe. And now when you go, you have to maneuver traffic to get there. So thank you all so very much, and for the students that participated earlier today and for those that are taking classes, just know that you are the future and you will be the ones determining what direction we'll go by asking or suggesting new courses that we can then look at creating at our technical trade colleges so that we're keeping up with the demand of the job requirements. So when you go out, you're ready for the world, and you may have to hire one of us, you know, later on, so remember me. But again, thank you so very much, and I really appreciate all you do, Mr. Hunt, your staff and all of the students, both adults and young adults, and even some of our students in, in middle and high school that receive certifications, they walk across that stage and receive certifications right along with our adults. So thank you so very much for all the hard work that you're doing and what you will continue to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Flowers, and if I may, if you will indulge me for just one minute, we very rarely get the opportunity to hear from a graduate of career and technical education. And I'd like to present to you right now Caitlin Kreamans, who is a recent graduate of Palm Harbor University High School in the medical program and currently works at Morton Plant High School in the emergency department. Caitlin?
That'd be hospital?
I think email hospital. Um, just a disclaimer, I'm strictly medical, I'm not very good at speaking, but hang in there. My name is Caitlin Kreamans, I graduated from Palm Harbor University's Medical Magnet Program in two thousand and eighteen. I graduated with my Emergency Medical Response Certification, my Electrocardiograph Technician Certification and my Certified Nursing Assistant Certification. Um, I'm currently working at Morton Plant in the emergency department. When I first started in two thousand and eighteen, I was, I used my CNA certification to get hired onto a progressive care unit as a patient care tech. After a few months, my manager utilized my EKG certification and had me sit down to take a fifty-question test, and soon, shortly after that, I was promoted to a patient support technician. I was doing a mix of working on the floor with patients and also watching over forty-six different heart monitors. I've been recognized multiple times for being so young with as much as experience as I do. After a year and a half of working on a progressive care unit, I was presented with a job opportunity in the emergency department. I recently took this job opportunity to expand my clinical experience with daycare. While working full-time, I am also furthering my education at St. Petersburg College. I am nineteen currently and am now living on my own with a new car. And can finally declare myself as financially independent. I wanted to take this moment to thank Palm Harbor University's Medical Magnet Program for setting me up for success. In particular, my teachers, Ms. Tuma, Ms. Millers, Ms. Augs and Ms. Solke, all had such a big impact in my life. They provided all the knowledge, clinicals and moral support I needed to be able to face my future. Without them, I would never be where I am today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And to think that this is starting in elementary school and working its way up through our system, thank you for all the hard work, we appreciate it. All right, we have our next recognition or proclamation, which is recognizing the Student Services Month. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to call upon Donna Sicilian, as she comes forward, just be one of a voice from this board to say thank you to all of our school counselors, thank you to our nurses, social workers and school psychologists for the work they do each and every day to support our principals, our teachers, our students and, and yes, even their families, so.
Good morning. Thank you, good morning, Dr. Greggo, school board members and staff. I really appreciate the opportunity each year to come forward and take a moment to make sure that we stop and recognize all of the work that the individuals and student services do every single day. And I know there's just so many people throughout our district, so many adults that do so much for the children and the families, and I was thinking about, one of the things that makes student service staff so unique is that we absolutely touch every aspect of every part of this district and this community. And our invocation this morning mentioned, you know, that sometimes we seek more recognition than service, and I was thinking about the team of student service staff and how I can say with confidence that they really seek to serve. That is what drew people to this work, that is what keeps people at this work, and I think too that one of the things we always say is if we are doing our job really well, you're not really thinking about us all the time. So I think it's important to take a moment during the month of February and stop and think about the school counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses, prevention staff that make up our student services department. So February is the national month to recognize student service staff, and we appreciate the board taking time to do that because the work that they do is essential, it's like breathing in air. You don't really think about that you're breathing in air until maybe you have a little difficulty breathing in air, and then you realize how important that breath is. So when things really begin to unravel, the first people we call on are the staff, and they are always there. They have gone down to Parkland, they have gone across the country to respond in other places that experienced tragedy, and they show up every single day here in our schools and in our community. So I thank you for taking time to recognize their important work.
Good, thank you. And Ms. Kane? Kane, would you like to read the proclamation for us, please?
Uh, proclamation, Student Services Month. Whereas each and every school day, stu, school counselors, nurses, social workers, school psychologists, whom we call student service professionals, work together to assist students in acquiring the knowledge, skills and competencies to make well-reasoned and healthy lifelong decisions. It is important to recognize that academic performance is impacted by developmental factors and school commun, and community factors. And research demonstrates the value in providing supportive programs and services in order to increase student achievement. The services provided by student service personnel enables the students to learn and the teachers to teach and strengthens the bond between families and schools. And we acknowledge that the student service professionals have the necessary knowledge, skills and abilities to reduce barriers to learning and assist classroom teachers, parents and community agencies to provide a safe and positive learning environment for all children. And we acknowledge that student services professionals contribute to the educational success and personal development of all students. We realize that student services professionals provide services directly to teachers, parents and to the community. They also serve as a resource to school improvement teams to facilitate school improvement plans. Now therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize the month of February as Student Services Month for Pinellas County Schools and appreciates the significant contributions made by school counselors, school nurses, school social workers and school psychologists. Signed, the eleventh day of February 2020.
Good, thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Okay, and a second, good, this, Dr. Carr? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no? All righty, and it passes unanimously, and thank you for all your work as well. We have a fantastic team here, and we're, we're very, very fortunate, so, thank you. All right, during the next piece, we're going to have a video that we're gonna watch, and once the video is finished, we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Greggo and go down front. It's all the same item, but we'll watch it. So, Dr. Greggo, you wanna lead into it?
Sure, board members, thank you so much, this is, uh, it gives me great pleasure to bring recognition to the Helios Educational Foundation and our Pinellas Educational Foundation. Many of you were able to attend the kickoff of the College and Career Center at, at Clearwater High School, but it's just a tip of the iceberg of elevating excellence. I know, I've talked a lot about elevating excellence over the last few years, and there's so many people to thank, but watch the video, video's worth, they used to say, a picture's worth a thousand words, a video's worth even more, so I think it'll explain that. And then after that, I'm gonna call upon if Mr. Hendrick and, and Dr. Byer, who's the CEO and President of Pinellas Education Foundation, can come forward.
And thank you.
What an exciting morning this is. Welcome again for the official launch of the College and Career Centers in Pinellas. In a short period of time, our college centers becomes a hub or place on our campus where students go for post-high school, college and career information. It's not about the space itself, but rather what we do in it.
We had to think bigger, we had to go deeper, we had to provide greater supports for the students than we ever did before. We wanted Pinellas County to be the district and the state and the nation that said, when your student goes here, your student will reach their potential.
All students deserve to connect to their potential and to the limitless possibilities that they have in front of them. Alongside these partners, Helios today is proud to announce publicly for the first time our investment in elevating excellence and for the establishment of the College and Career Centers throughout Pinellas County with a one-point-three million dollar contribution to this effort. We believe in what you're doing, we know it will be successful. We know students, it will change the lives of students, which I think is the heart is what we're really all about.
At the beginning of this school year, I received an email from Quest Bridge. I decided to look into it, and I found out that the organization offered scholarships for high-achieving, low-income students. Thinking back to my time in the Elevating Excellence Program and the conversations I've had with my teachers, my guidance counselor and my parents, I knew that I had to take the opportunity and complete the scholarship. Finally, after weeks of anticipation, I got the news that I had received the Quest Bridge Full Ride Scholarship from Princeton University. I'm so overjoyed that I'm going to attend such an amazing university. Without the support, I wouldn't be where I am now, and I hope these programs will continue to help students get on track to plan for their future.
The success of our students as I lead Pinellas County Schools is the ultimate measure of our school system, and I know through elevating excellence in our college and career centers, we will continue to impact the lives of each student and ultimately our community.
All the organizations that are involved, there is definitely unity in the community here today, and we thank you so much for your hard work and efforts, we couldn't do without you.
May I ask Mr. Hendrick, who's the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning and usually, and also a major player in the development of elevating excellence, to come forward, and board members, if you could go down, you'll...
Good morning, once again, board members, Dr. Greggo, staff and the public. We wanted to take a moment at our board meeting today as a school district and as a community to acknowledge the generous donation of Helios Education Foundation and the hard work of the Pinellas Education Foundation to make this happen. As you know, three years ago, we launched Elevating Excellence with a vision from our school board and our superintendent, and at the same time, we're very fortunate to have a new, excited, focused CEO at the Pinellas Education Foundation who said, I want to do more to support the efforts of students in Pinellas County Schools. And so we launched a summer seminar, and with their help, got feedback on an external evaluation from parents, from students, from teachers and counselors to find out how do we continue this journey of elevating excellence? That next step was to embed these supports in the school day, to not just have them available to selected students who can attend in the summer, but to bring it to every one of our students in our entire school district. And so that is where partnering with Leap Tampa Bay and the Education Foundation, we launched the idea of College and Career Centers, first at Largo High School as a trial, and then with the foundation's help, getting a large donation from the Helios Education Foundation to bring it first to four more high schools at Boca Seega, at Gibbs, at Clearwater and at Pinellas Park High School, and soon to every high school in our school district. This donation will accelerate the progress of elevating excellence and help our district and our students be seen locally and nationally as innovative and successful. I want to once again publicly thank the foundation and ask Dr. Stacy Byer, the CEO, for a few words.
Thank you for having me here today. What I just want to say is this is just the beginning of how the Education Foundation can really amplify and accelerate some of the good work going on in Pinellas County Schools. Elevating Excellence was just a first opportunity for us to really show how through partnership we can build, take an idea and make it even better and grow it even greater. The opportunity with the Helios Education Foundation was really leveraged with also a gift, a million-dollar gift that we got from the Jacobson Foundation. So in total, we're investing about two-point-three million dollars into this initiative to get it, to get it off the ground. So we're very excited to be a part of this, and we're already thinking about new and additional ways that we can enhance elevating excellence and, and drive success for more students throughout Pinellas County Schools, so thanks so much.
So board members, we'd like to present you with the check that was presented to our foundation in support of our students.
Congratulations, thank you so much for your support, thank you. Board members, our next presentation, we are going back to Student Services Month, and it gives me great pleasure to call again on Donna Sicilian, the Executive Director, to recognize our two thousand nineteen-twenty Student Services Employee of the Year.
Thank you, welcome again. I'm gonna ask Lynn Anthony to come up with me. Lynn Anthony is our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Student Service Employee of the Year. She was chosen for this honor by her colleagues, which makes it incredibly special. Lynn was chosen because she represents, what we spoke about a few minutes ago, the hard work and dedication of all of our student services team. Lynn has been in the district over twenty-three years, and she is a school social worker who currently works at Dunedin Elementary, and her principal is here to join her, and also her husband and her supervisor, so she brought her posse with her, but she has a whole lot of other supporters that are throughout the district cheering her on because they feel confident that Ms. Anthony represents their work and the work that they do. She does so by going above and beyond each and every day for the students and families and staff. She is, we went out and surprised her with this honor at her school a few weeks ago, and the way we diverted her attention was a staff member said, well, I need to talk to her about a personal situation anyway, which was not out of the ordinary, so of course she went in the office and was providing counseling for one of the staff members while we all came in with our balloons and flowers, and so she's a little representation of how Lynn and the other staff go above and beyond to support the people that they work with as well as the children. She runs their after-school programs for tutoring, she is a mentor, she consistently, she's run girlfriend clubs over the years. Lynn has provided support to social workers that are new, she's been a mentor, she works evenings, weekends, meeting with these new staff, she's been our technology advisor, she has most definitely supported me in my work. And so it's these things and so much more that chose Lynn as the two thousand nineteen-twenty Student Service Employee of the Year. So Lynn, we have an award for you. We also have a hundred-dollar gift certificate from the Free For All Theater that Jim and you can enjoy, or you could take me, depending on who you want to date. The Free For All Theater is a nonprofit theater with a mission to pursue art's greater purpose in transforming lives, and so I think it's gonna be an amazing experience, and we want to thank them for that donation. So I want to present to you Lynn Anthony. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Wyatt, as the principal, is here, stand up and come on up with, for the picture, please. Anybody else? Well, thank you, Carrie, for being here. Stay up there, please. Okay, DeMars. Board members, we have one remaining introduction, and that's for our newly appointed administrators as this board has as a tradition. I want to name two individuals. One is unable to be here because of a family situation, but let me read his introduction, and if he's able to get here at a different time, we certainly will reintroduce him. But I just want to bring to this board's recognition James Kimmlinger, who's the principal, new principal at Dunedin High School. He began his career in Pinellas County schools in 2010, served as assistant principal at Dunedin High School from 2019 until he was appointed the principal of Dunedin High School effective January 15th of 2020. His background also includes serving as assistant principal from 2012 to 19 and guidance counselor from 10 to 12 at Northeast High School. He served as a guidance counselor, assistant principal, and principal also in the state of Michigan. He earned his bachelor's degree in earth science from Central Michigan University, a master's degree in K-12 counseling from Michigan State University, and a specialist degree in educational leadership from Saginaw State University. So we certainly, please join me in welcoming James Kimmlinger as principal of Dunedin High School. The second is Mark Nargiar. He's the new director of professional and development. Come on up. He began his career in education in 1991. He served as director for the Office of School of Performance and Accountability for Broward County Schools from 2012 until he was appointed director of professional and development effective January 15th. His background also includes serving as a teacher assistant, classroom teacher, curriculum specialist, assistant principal, and principal, all in Broward County. Mr. Nargiar earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Florida State University, a master's degree in ed. leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Nargiar. That concludes our presentations.
All right, now it's time for public comment for items that are on the agenda. Mrs. Simonetti, do we have any speakers?
Board members and Dr. Greggo, we have two speakers this morning to address specific agenda items. Our first speaker will be Lenora Faulkner to speak to consent number 17. Our second speaker will be Mark Clutho for consent 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, and non-consent 1, 2, and 3.
Good morning, School Board members. I'm speaking to the request, 717, request of substantial completion for the new construction and renovating a building six interior and roof at Pinellas Park Middle, project number The last time I was here, I was here early. I'm always here early, but there was only a board member and Dr. Greggo here, so I spoke to him, and I said, "I made a promise to the teachers at Pinellas Park Middle that I would speak at every school board meeting until they got their new school." And he told me, he said, "But Ms. Faulkner, it's just so great and everything." And I said, "But it has to be 100% finished, and I'll still come." And he said, "But you should see it." And I said, "No, I'll just sit in the back with all these administrators that I taught with." And he said, "Please keep them in line." And I said, "They've been out of control as long as I have." Anyway, in 1995, Dr. Hinesley asked me to speak. I worked on it all on spring break. I was petrified. Teachers didn't speak at school board meetings. My speech was, "Pinellas County Schools: A Caring Community." The school board called me the passionate teacher from Pinellas Park Middle. Our new principal always introduced me as the passionate teacher from Pinellas Park Middle. We had many visitors because we were the Baldridge Quality Visitation Middle School, and he always introduced me that way. We took it very seriously. They actually came to my chemistry class in 2001 when we had evaluations, and Pinellas County did not make the grade. Our first principal wanted our students to love science. The physics teacher asked me, the new teacher, who lost her job because Florida won the lottery, and I was the new teacher. I took a year of computers. I asked Dr. Hinesley if he'd sent me 21 hours at junior college in a graduate's course at USF. That teacher would teach physics with a computer teacher. They would have 20 students each, and they asked me if I would teach all 40 students. I said, "No problem, that's just the way I am." Of course, modification was created with the Department of Education students, and they would get a half a credit for technology. Rick Wager worked with our SAC team. Nancy Pellegrino, the physics teacher, was honored as one of the top 10 teachers out of 6,000 in 1995. Over one-third of our students were special needs.
Thank you.
Our school and our program was destroyed. Thank you.
Good morning.
Mark Clutho, Largo. Agenda items. You understand what that means? 716, strategic direction, learning in a safe environment. You don't understand what that means. Ditto for 718. HVAC renovation, and it's still going to be a stupid building, belching the carbon. And then 719, you say strategic direction, effective and efficient use of resources. 720, learning in a safe environment. No. And then here, 721, you're saying again, learning in a safe environment. And then 8.1, $53,600,000, and this is not going to be an effective and efficient use of resources. And then we have 8.2, again, you say effective and efficient use of resources. Over $12 million. 15.251, millions and millions of dollars. Well, you can't get the imaging specular reflectors right here, so how would somebody think that you're going to get any buildings right? Just doesn't stand to reason, does it? There's that old cause and effect. What do we get? What do we get? We're in trouble. UN report warns that humans are threatening their own futures by accelerating the extinction of over a million species. That's what your buildings bring.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, there are no other speakers, and there is no unfinished business, so I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Approval of the consent agenda, SAC.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now on to non-consent. Our first item is to request approval of the agreement with Hebner Architects Incorporated for Architectural and Construction Administrative Services in the amount of $3,501,041 for new construction renovations and remodeling of Clearwater High School, project number 9251. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair, and School Board members, and to the general public, typically, these construction projects don't go on non-consent. I feel like it's very important that we express the sense of urgency. This board has proclaimed, and thank you for the bonding of resources, so that we can accelerate the construction projects. If some of our schools, as you know, are not a growth district, but we are a district with an aging infrastructure, and with that aging infrastructure comes the update and upkeep and modernization of these buildings. And this first one is one that we're going to be extremely proud of at Clearwater High School. I'm going to ask Mr. Herbig to just give a few highlights of this project. I know this board went over this project during a recent workshop, but I also think it's very important for the general public to know how excited it is. And I can also say to you that no matter where I go in the Clearwater community, this word is getting out that this board and others are looking to renovate Clearwater High School for the future. So thank you on their behalf. Mr. Herbig?
Thank you, Dr. Greggo, Madam Chair, Board members, and staff. I want to take you back real quick to 2016, when we embarked on this five-year plan, and five basic goals. We wanted to make sure that we enhanced instructional spaces. We wanted to eliminate those portable cities that we see at some of our elementary schools. We wanted to update our older facilities. We wanted to make sure that our schools were safe. And then we also wanted to continue the high level of maintenance that we have. We didn't want to forego any maintenance concerns to put money into new construction, making sure that we maintained our current buildings. The three projects that you see today on the non-consent portion of your agenda meet all of those goals. In 2017, as Dr. Greggo said, we bonded about $65 million. Those funds went mostly for three projects, at Pinellas Park Middle School, Melrose Elementary School, and Jacobson Technical High School. Those projects are now coming to a close. We are moving on to a second project at Jacobson that we'll talk about here in a couple of minutes, but Melrose and Pinellas Park Middle School, we're expecting to have grand reopenings of those schools coming up in the next few months. So it is time to kick off the second round of these major projects. And back in 2017, when we talked about this, we also mentioned the fact that we would revisit and consider a second round of bonding. Mr. Smith and I will discuss that with you next week at the workshop. But again, for today, the first project on your non-consent agenda is the Clearwater High Project, and it kicks off again our second round of projects. There are other ones already underway, and I don't want to skip any of those. We already have projects underway at Tyrone Middle School, at Northeast High School, at Medallon Middle School, there's one at San Jose Elementary School, and another Phase Two at Lakewood High School that we're just getting underway right now as well. And, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Dr. Greggo, and it's St. Pete High School as well. So our goal for the $54 million project at Clearwater High School is that we're looking to renovate about a one-quarter of the classrooms to make sure that they are up to the standards of their career and academies that they have in place already at the school. We will be taking down most of the finger-wing buildings at the school and rebuilding some classrooms and classroom buildings in addition to that. We want to reorient the front of the campus to Gulf to Bay. Also, we are working with the city of Clearwater to beautify that section of Gulf to Bay there to make sure that when people come by, they see a beautiful front entrance of the campus. We're also working to move the existing administration building from the west part of the campus to the Gulf to Bay entrance, and then take the existing building and make that the home of the Clearwater Adult Education Center. Right now, it's across the street to the west, across from the football field, and it really provides for a unified and a safer and more secure campus as well. And so we do have some slides that I think we're going to put up on the monitors. The first one, I believe, is an overhead view, kind of a rough rendering, if you will, of how the campus will be laid out. The gray little strip for the audience, at the bottom of the monitor is Gulf to Bay. The four red buildings would be the four new classroom buildings. The gymnasium is all the way over to your right. You see a little bit of the football stadium there, all the way to the right. The existing auditorium, the chorus and the band buildings are there in the far-left part of the screen. Those will stay. The red buildings and the two darker gray buildings about in the middle of this slide are new features that you'll see at the school. Our next slide shows a little bit more of an artist's rendition of a central courtyard between those four new classroom buildings that you saw on red. And then our last slide shows what the approach to the new front will be at Clearwater High School from Gulf to Bay. You see the gymnasium, the existing gymnasium, all the way over on your right, and then the new administration building, also featuring a media center and some other classroom student support spaces there in the middle of your screen. So with that, that is our plan for Clearwater High School, fits into the five-year plan that we established back in 2016, and also fits into the plan that we had to pursue a second round of bonding.
Thank you, Board members. If there's any questions, we're...
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion? Is my thing or not here? All righty, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Hebner Architects Incorporated for Architectural and Construction Administrative Services in the amount of $3,501,041. We have a motion and a second already. For the new construction renovations and remodeling of Clearwater High School, project number 9251. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is to request approval of the amendment number one to the agreement with Williams Associates for Architectural and Contract Administrative Services in connection with the reusable prototype classroom buildings, resulting in a total project for architectural and engineer fees for the amount of $890,203 at North Shore Elementary, project 9354, James B. Sandlin Elementary School, project 9355, and Shore Acres Elementary School, project 9356. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair, and Board members, the reason why 8.2 is so important to us is I want to remind us all, as part of our strategic plan, we set out to eliminate these portables in our school district outside of the need for portable classrooms, and there is a place and a time for them, but when they start to obtain, the number of years that some of our portables have, 10, 12, 15 years, we need to build hard buildings on our schools. But so this particular item, even though it is talking about a prototype, is for North Shore, James Sandlin, that's a K-H school, and also Shore Acres. I also want the board and the general public to recognize that the purpose and importance of prototyping is that the following schools will also be looking at wing additions to eliminate portables. And outside of the ones I mentioned, North Shore, Sandlin, and Shore Acres, we also are looking at Anona, Bowder, Gulf Beaches, Mildred Helms, Plum, Sawgrass, Seminole Elementary, Osceola High School, Pasadena Fundamental, and these are additions to, if you add up those classrooms, these are portables that are coming over. If you think about, I know I was recently around the Seminole Elementary School, those portables have been out there for quite some time. It is time, and I want to thank... And I want to thank the board again for your action in terms of not only the bonding, but moving this along more aggressively in terms of improving our school district. And I want to ask Mr. Herbeck to make some comments about the initial three, but overall the process that he's gone under in terms of prototyping these.
Again, thank you again, Dr. Grego. As Dr. Grego said, this does continue us on our plan to eliminate those portable cities around the school district. The list of schools that Dr. Grego read will eliminate over 100 of those portable buildings with permanent buildings in place. One of the things that we looked at is that each of these campuses are so unique, and each of them also, they require different sizes. Some of them have a need for six additional rooms, others needed as many as 12. And so, what we wanted to do is really establish a process that would bring about the construction and design in a quicker pace. We didn't want to have to go out and kind of start all over every time we went from one campus to another. So, the idea of hiring an architect and adopting a prototype design was something that was really very efficient for our use and also for both the architect and the construction companies as well. The whole concept is really centered around a two-classroom pod. And this two-classroom pod can be used, and we can move it in different formations, kind of depending on the layout of the campus. It could be a straight line, it could be a T, it could be an S, it could be any design that you want, as long as it fits well and onto the campus and provides for an efficient use of that campus by the students and teachers. And basically, we can put these pods together, obviously in groups of two. So, we're looking, in this case, the projects that Dr. Grego read are either going to be six, eight, or 10 classroom buildings. Each are going to be unique, again, to the layout of the campus. They can be stacked and kind of basically think of them as Legos. Legos that we can put together and put and make sure that they fit on the campus well. And so, as we bring these projects forward, these are the first three, again, at Sanderson, at North Shore, and at Shore Acres. I visited with the Shore Acres SAC last night and shared a plan for them, and we did get a round of applause that we are replacing the portables out there. So, they're very happy to see this project moving forward. But as we move forward with these, again, you'll see these projects moving forward, and we will be using the same two-classroom pod prototype, just in different formations depending on the layout of the campus.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Dr. Carr?
I just wanted to clarify, and maybe you can answer this, Mr. Smith. The projects that were in discussion right now are funding under prior bonding, not on the understanding that we've all already agreed to bond. Is that correct?
I believe these projects will be under the new bonding issue.
Okay. And we are getting the presentation on the new bonding at the next workshop?
That is correct.
And we're voting to approve these spendings without yet having approved the money to fund them?
Well, what I'll be bringing to you at the workshop is a reimbursement resolution, and what that allows you to do is to incur expenses for projects prior to bonding, and you're able to reimburse yourself from the proceeds of the bond once you do bond, which is what we've done in the past. This enables you to begin some preliminary work, architectural design, and this is the pattern that we used in the past bonding rounds.
Okay. And in the past, we've just had one prior incident. Is that right? How many instances of bonding have we had?
We bonded one time in the past several years. Many years ago, we may have bonded again. Once before, the state bonded on our behalf, C O N D S Bonds, which is just about paid off at this point. I think it'll be paid off this year, in fact. So, we bonded once, I believe it was in 2017, September.
Okay. But that was the first time. Prior to that, we've always been a pay-as-you-go district, have we not?
We have been a pay-as-you-go district. That's correct.
Okay. And then in 2017, we bonded, and some of these elements would need, we would need to bond again in order to pay for them, correct?
Could you clarify that question, please?
These items that we're discussing here today, we would need to bond again in order to...
Yes. So, what we talked about back in 2017 is what we presented to the board. We spoke about bonding approximately $125 to $130 million in a couple of different rounds. The first round we bonded was $60 million, proceeds were $65 million. This is part of that second round of bonding that we talked about back in 2017.
Correct. I just know that there are three of us that are new from, since then, and we may not have wanted to bond, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. So, going forward, we make sure that we're, we all understand the ramifications and the bonding.
Absolutely. That's the purpose for our presentation at the workshop. And just seeing, Florida's, Florida school districts typically bond under COPS programs. Pinellas, to your point, has been primarily a pay-as-you-go district for the last several, for many years. But to Dr. Grego's point, there's a lot of infrastructure needs that need to be taken care of. This enables us to move those projects up a little bit. We have the lowest probably bonding outstanding from any district in the state of Florida. Even with this next round of bonding, we'll still be among the lowest in the state of Florida.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good point, School Board Member Carr. And I don't know if it has already been done, but perhaps if the information that was provided to us in 2017 and what those board members at that time voted on, if that information could be shared with the school board members that were not here so that they would have the benefit of the same presentation that we had and the rationale for going out to bond, which was something we typically did not do, but recognizing that our buildings were literally falling down, some of them around our ears, the severe condition of St. Pete High School and some other places, we would not have the financial wherewithal within our budget to pay for those things if we had not bonded for them. The other, not concerned, but the other thing that we were up against is the fact that we don't receive those construction dollars, INPECO dollars, to that altitude from the state anymore. So, I think it would be helpful if that information could be shared with those school board members so that they could hear and see the dialogue that occurred back then, not that it would change your opinion or anything, but just at least make sure it provides you with the information that we were given.
Dr. Carr?
Thank you. There we go. Thank you, and I appreciate that it was shared with us during our orientation and then again in a follow-up, one-on-ones. So, I do have a lot of that information. I am grateful to Mr. Smith's department for their due diligence and making us well-informed on the bonding and our fiscal responsibility with it and our standing in terms of our credibility. So, thank you for your department in sharing that information. And I know I take a lot of your time with lots of questions, so to make sure that I have a good understanding of where we're going with things, but I wanted it to be brought to our attention that we were making this decision and not to say that the cart's before the horse necessarily, but it is important for us to acknowledge and be transparent in how our spending, what we're voting on in our spending and that we may have different perspectives with being new folks on the board, so...
Dr. Carr, it's always time well-spent when you come in and chat with us. We certainly welcome you. And any board members that have questions specifically and they'd like to meet with us one-on-one, we welcome that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. All righty.
And I didn't know that they had met, so I do apologize about...
No, and I appreciate that. Just wondering.
Yeah. All righty. So, we do have a, I don't see any more discussion, so we're going to move on. We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment, for the approval of amendment number one to agree with, yes, Williams Dockar Associates for Architectural and Contract Administrative Services in connection with the reusable prototype classroom buildings, resulting in a total project for architect engineer fee in the amount of $890,203 for North Shore Elementary, project 9354, James B. Sanderson Elementary School, project 9355, and Shore Acres Elementary, project number 9356. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. We now move on to the next item, which is to request approval of the amendment number six to the agreement with J.E. Dunn Construction Company for Phase Two Guaranteed Maximum Price in the amount of $4,612,267.94 for the construction and contract administrative services in connection with the Veterinary Science Building, resulting in a total guaranteed maximum price of $15,251,753.10 at Richard O. Jacobson Technical High School in Seminole, project 9141. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Grego?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I couldn't be more pleased of the work and the excitement, as you saw even outside on our patio area of Richard O. Jacobson High School. In its second full year, that school is full. There's a waitlist on there. Marty G. and Cola has done a fabulous job with that school of just bringing an excitement not only to the Seminole community, but really throughout our school district. I want to also say that this gift and this portion of what we're recognizing today in terms of the construction of the Veterinary Science Building, as was mentioned before, but let me try to connect the dots, was the single largest donation or gift to our foundation of $5 million that contributed significantly to this building, also to elevating excellence and to many other initiatives that we have as a partnership with the foundation. At the pleasure of Bob McIntyre, you know he's a champion of really securing the Richard O. Jacobson donation and works on that, sits on the board of the foundation there, but he's out of town, and he wanted to specifically call me this morning and say what a happy day this is that this board is entertaining this and this building, that the foundation, the Richard Jacobson Foundation, is very, very pleased with the progress we're making with the schools, the school's performance, and certainly this new Veterinary Science Building. If I can, if I may, please, as part of my presentation, call back to the microphone, Dr. Byer, who is the CEO and President of the Pinellas Education Foundation. He's been so instrumental in securing these funds and also working with us to get this building going.
Thank you very much, Dr. Grego. Bob McIntyre also called me at 7:30 in the morning and asked that I be here today to express his appreciation to the Richard O. Jacobson Foundation, the Pinellas County Schools, and the Education Foundation for bringing to life this new Vet Sciences Building. We're really proud to be, to have the opportunity to accelerate the growth of the school with the addition of this new building. Recently, I had the opportunity to be out at a meeting with the principal and was moved to see the concept of giving back, which was a huge part of the ethos of Mr. Jacobson when he was alive. And it's clearly playing out at Tech High. The principal shared with me, they recently partnered with Habitat for Humanity to build beds for homeless children, and even more than the building itself, Mr. Jacobson would be so proud to see his legacy living out in such an impactful way. Also, as the CEO of the Pinellas Education Foundation and a member of the Stavros Career Education Board, we're proud that in its first year in the new facilities, that Tech High has already achieved four new academies of distinction. So, I want to thank Marty G. and Cola, principal at Tech High, Clint Herbeck, and the construction team, and Mark Hunt for shepherding this new building forward, and we are very much looking forward to the grand opening this fall. So, thank you so much for your partnership.
Very good. Thank you. All right, I see no indication of discussion, so we have a motion and a second to approve the maximum, approve the amendment number six to the agreement of the J.E. Dunn Construction Company for Phase Two Guaranteed Maximum Price in the amount of $4,612,267.94 for the construction and contract administrative services in connection with the Veterinary Science Building, resulting in a total guaranteed maximum price of $15,251,753.10 at the Richard O. Jacobson Technical High School at Seminole, project 9141. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it also passes unanimously. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And our next item is setting a public hearing and authorizing the advertising of the public hearing to consider amendments of policy 5500.08 in the code of conduct, misconduct that requires specific consequences. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Dr. Grego?
Yes, Madam Chair and school board members. This is to dovetail off of the workshop that we last had concerning the student code of conduct, specifically centered around some of the vaping issues and consequences for that. I'm going to call upon Mr. Dull and also Mr. Kennedy, who's in the back, who certainly has spearheaded some of the review overview of the student code of conduct.
Good morning, board members, Dr. Grego, staff, and community. Today, we bring forward for first reading, policy 5500.08, code of student conduct, misconduct that requires specific consequences. This was presented to the board during workshop on January 21st. Many may recall that last year was the first time we used the word vaping device in this policy. However, as we've moved forward, what the proposed updates reflect is explicitly addressing vaping within the student code of conduct, and the language expands what was previously just called tobacco and nicotine to tobacco, nicotine, and vaping. We've taken a preventative approach in looking at what this code of conduct does. It has a lot of proactive and educational components, as well as addressing the consequences for violating the student code of conduct. Also, I want to call attention to, there is one component that does not have to do with the vaping portion that is an update as well, and that is legislative, from last year's legislative session, to address threats and threat assessment and when those have to be in consultation with law enforcement. So, with that, I bring forward for first reading.
Okay. Good. Are there any questions or discussion? And we did go over this in quite a bit of detail at our workshop, so we appreciate both the work that you have done as well as Mr. Kennedy on this particular thing. So, we have a motion and a second. Just, oh, you did. I'm sorry. Mr. Dudley?
Thank you. I have a question. Legal can probably help out. Under the new, it says consequences, this is on two slash eight, just above first offense, and it says, it lists all the things that, you know, vaping and all like that. I'm curious, what it says, "In addition, students may receive a written civil citation." Why are we using "may" instead of "shall"?
Well, Mr. Dudley, part of that will have to do with the discretion of the law enforcement officer. As you know, we hire some law enforcement officers. They're our employees. But we obviously use many outside law enforcement officers as school resource officers. Some law enforcement officers may come off-campus as just a general police department or sheriff's office deputy or officer, and it would be up to them as to whether or not a civil citation was issued. So, we left that discretion in there because we cannot dictate the outside law enforcement officer's actions.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We have a motion and a second to set the public hearing and authorize the advertisement of the public hearing to consider amendment of policy 5500.08 to the code of conduct, misconduct that requires specific consequences. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. And it also passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Flowers?
Yes, Ms. Dull, before you run, and for staff, I just want to thank you for the strong consideration and for removing the portion that says reassignment to an alternative educational setting. I know you all heard my passion, if you will, during the workshop, and I want to thank you for addressing that and making sure that that was removed from the final product. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to items introduced by the superintendent. Dr. Grego?
To the board members and to the public, I too want to, as we recognize a lot of employees of last month, a Teacher of the Year, Support Employee, we have some today, the Student Support Employee of the Year. It's always great to celebrate the great workers that we have and great employees that we have. But thank you for making the evening of excellence truly an evening of excellence. And to the foundation, Dr. Byer is not here any longer, but I can tell you that working with her and with the foundation has truly been a great partner and partnership. And to Mr. Martinez Cooley, certainly will represent us very, very well at the state level. So, thanks to all of you. Also, from this position and from yours, I know that whenever you have the community coming out to support us, as they did with the Freddie Diles Gym renaming, what a wonderful Saturday. I know Ms. Flowers and Coach Dudley, you gave such tremendous remarks at that dedication of the gymnasium. But more important is me sitting on stage and watching the community from decades and decades. We talk about our schools, and schools really are historical buildings, but we don't knock them down like the K-Marts of the world, but rather we keep them, we renovate them, and we keep the history of those buildings alive. And one of the things that we all came together with, we all had, we all either had some bearings or attended Gibbs or one of the schools, and it was just a... or attended Gibbs or one of the schools, and it was just a tremendous display of community excitement. We know we started to hear that excitement when we were at Gulfport, when we had our school board meeting down at Gulfport, and they filled that small little 60-seat auditorium. Well, they filled, and people filled the auditorium at Gibbs High School, and everybody was a gladiator that day. So Ruben Hepburn, thank you and congratulations, what a wonderful program. Everyone did a great job, and this board needs to feel very proud that we're staying connected to that community. Also, I want to say thanks and congratulations to Boca Ciega High School. The College Board each year, it started a few years ago to take a look at underrepresented enrollment in AP classes, and one of such category was female students enrolled in Computer Science. So they named it the Female Computer Diversity Award, and Boca Ciega was one of only 639 schools to be recognized throughout the United States, and that is a higher percentage of females enrolled in Computer Science than males, and a percentage, they have this formula with the percentage of females in the schools and so forth, but we're really pleased that we're pushing AP classes for a whole lot of folks, but especially some of those that might be traditionally underrepresented. Also, I want to give a great send-off to James B. Sandlin students who are heading to Washington, DC after winning the regional competition for the, as you know, James Sandlin IB World School, won the Future City Competition, and is heading to Washington, DC to compete. They competed with 24 teams from the entire Tampa Bay area. That Future Cities, it's an engineering competition, that they posed the questions to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to design the perfect city of the future. And this year's topic is clean water, tap into tomorrow, so very appropriate topic, by the way, but these students, if you've ever seen their work, and on all of the students that participate, they do such a magnificent job. They'll be going and traveling to Washington, DC, the end of this week, February 15 through the 19th, for the national competition, so let's certainly wish them well. That concludes my comments for today, and also want to say thank you to Mr. Hunt and to all the students and the teachers that came down here to the walkway to celebrate Career and Technical Education Month, but we certainly celebrate it each and every day, so thank you for your participation also. Thanks.
Items introduced by the School Board Attorney.
No report today, thank you, ma'am.
Good, thank you. Items introduced by School Board Members. Ms. Flowers?
Yes, I just have a couple of things. One, I guess, would be a safety issue, so if we could maybe think about having a presentation at one of our workshops regarding the safety of our bus drivers, because I'm still getting phone calls about, unfortunately, some students not acting appropriately, and with bus drivers having their backs to them, can't see, you know, when they're coming up, and just some of the verbalities, and I know I shared one incident that I had where I, you know, pulled over because a bus had pulled over and stopped, and the bus driver had to call the police because things were so out of control. So maybe if we could think about that and what we could do to make sure that they are a little more safer because of that. I want to say congratulations to Lakewood High School basketball teams, they did very well, they're girls under the coaching of Ms. Nicole Tunsil, who also was a student of Pinellas County Schools, and she paid, played pro-women's basketball. They were the district champions, so I'm excited for them. They beat Booker Creek, so yay yay yay. And then for the boys, under the coaching of Anthony Lawrence, they beat Eastlake, and so they were the champions in that category. They have a game that will be coming up, the district tournament is today, against Sarasota Military Academy, 7 o'clock tonight, so if you're interested in cheering them on, please do so. I just wanted to draw out, we all supported Consent Agenda Item 7.10, but that was the contract that we have with the Juvenile Welfare Board, and just wanted to share something positive. We've been in a partnership with JWB for a while, and this particular contract allows for the sharing of data when it comes to truancy issues, when it comes to attendance issues, those things that really have a direct impact on the students' learning, and it also goes to fund some of the activities that we have in the community, working with some of our most struggling students. So we passed that, you know, within the whole group, but I just wanted to share that little piece because I believe our partnership really is one of the many pieces of fabric that we're using to try to move our struggling students, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. The Freddie Diles dedication, yes, it was absolutely fabulous. People came from all over, all out of town to witness that, as well as Mr. Diles' family members. So I got a chance to meet his niece, Michelle, and his, some of his cousins, Cynthia Harris and others, so it was really, really good, and I made sure that everyone knew that it was the support of this entire board that made that happen, as well as my consistently begging for more money to keep doing things to pull off the event, so I just wanted you guys to know that. I really appreciate it, and the community really appreciated it, and it was, it is heartfelt. Also, Mr. Ruben Menson was an integral part of trying to get the Freddie Diles activity launched and off. He passed away the morning that we were having the event, and so it was sad but happy. He did not get to attend that event and see it, but he worked really hard. As a matter of fact, he wasn't feeling well, but he had already prepared his comments because we had him on the program. He wanted to make his comments and was not able to do so, so I just want to publicly thank Mr. Ruben Menson. He is someone from our community that holds our history and shares that. He's also very artistic, very loving and very caring, and served as a mentor and a tutor and a volunteer in the community when it came to education, and I didn't want this day to go by without acknowledging all the work that he did. Several said they really felt like his presence was in the building that day because of everything that happened. And I want to thank Mr. Dan Wright, Coach Dan Wright, who played for Freddie Diles, but also coached at Lakewood High School. He was the coach at Lakewood High, well, my daughter was a cheerleader there for four years, so I saw his passion and his calm on the sidelines, but we were very appreciative of the wonderful comments that he was able to bring forward, and so I just wanted to share bits and pieces of those with you. And that is it.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Dudley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've already spoken about Freddie Diles, but I was very honored to be a part of that program, and I'm thinking back to when I first started teaching, it was my first interaction with Fred Diles, or Freddie Diles, and it was really great turnout, I don't know, what, 200, 300 people, I guess, were there? And a lot of guys that I coached with and against over the years were there, and it was really a very upbeat, and it was, I looked down at his family, and they were just so overwhelmed and so pleased with everything that was going on, and you mentioned Danny Wright, it was so good to see him, I haven't seen him in a while, and boy, he's another legend. A legend following another legend. Danny Wright did a great job, and it was really an honor and a pleasure to be there. The other side, the other thing I wanted to mention is that Northeast High School, I know you, I said all the time, but let me tell you, we just got a, the word that we're getting, an ROTC unit, Army ROTC, and ROTC units are very difficult to get, you have to jump through a lot of hoops to get them, and I know the community is very, very happy that that's happened, and we are looking forward to another part of, you know, our Viking lore, and it's real exciting, and I want to thank everybody responsible for going through all those, jumping through all those hoops. But anyway, it's, we've had a good couple of weeks, and we've still got, I'm going to mention it as I always do, we have a lot of sports, a lot of activities going on in schools. We just held a pageant at our high school, but there's a million things going on, it seems like, and if you can find yourself with something you want to do some evening, please go to a play, go to a, lacrosse is starting to, they'll be starting shortly, baseball's starting up, and please go and support these kids, they love it, and you may be surprised, it's very entertaining, and the kids appreciate it, and I just can't say enough, it's, you may be seeing some professional athletes someday down the road, you never know. So anyway, that's all I have, and again, please make an effort to go and see something at a school, and also be a mentor. Mentoring is so important in schools, and there's a lot of kids out there that are just waiting for someone to, you know, they can talk to, and it's, you'll feel good about yourself doing it, and you'll learn a lot, too. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Long?
Thank you. I'd like to start by telling you that this year at the R. Martin Luther King Celebration in Tarpon Springs, we were able to hear Mr. Jackson. He is the surviving police officer of the Courageous Twelve. Well, my husband was so impressed, this is African-American month, he went back to Dr. Lowery, and on February 21st, I think, I believe it starts at 8:30 in the morning, Mr. Jackson is coming to speak to the children and any other visitors that want to be there. It's powerful. His talk is powerful, to hear what he went through and the others that, you know, the endurance and the commitment they made to fight on. I can't imagine any student walking out of that school not thinking, wow. You know, when you stick together, you can really do anything, so if you have an opportunity, please call Osceola Middle, tell them, Dr. Lowery, it was Long that said so, and come visit. Also, I have a request, Dr. Corbett. Last week, I met with FAST, and we talked about their, you know, what they would like. I would like information about the parent component of FAST, because a program is only as successful as everyone that buys in. You know, we're making a commitment, but I'd like to see where the parent commitment, I know we're going to have a workshop coming up very soon, you know, how do we get everyone involved? Because a child, you do this program, which is, you know, I totally believe in it, but we've got to make a connection to the home life, and I, it was Dr., Ms. Flowers.
Call me that.
Yes, Dr. Flowers, see, very soon, she talked about that at the last meeting, and it really got me thinking, so I'd like to see that part of the program if we could. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right, well, with that, then, what board requests do we have? Dr. Corbett?
Madam Chair, I have two board requests. One is to discuss the potential workshop presentation on the safety of our bus drivers, and a second is to make sure we include in our presentation next week about the equity work that we're doing, we include the part about involving the parents and the community.
Very good, all righty, thank you. Our next thing would normally be our meeting evaluation, however, what we do is we adjourn this meeting, then we hear speakers from the audience that want to come and speak to items that are not on the agenda but pertain to the business of the district. Following that, we will then do our board evaluation, so.
Yes.
If they're...
If we could have a Freddie Diles banner on the school board, on the Gibbs House, High School?
Uh-huh.
We would be walking around and exhibiting the artwork that we have in the gallery.
All right, very good. Okay, so with that, we adjourn this meeting, and we move on to public participation. Ms. Simonetti?
Board Members and Dr. Grego, we have eight speakers today under general public comments. Our first two are Lenora Faulkner and Mark Clutho.
Lenora Faulkner. And it is still, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Cook, and honorable School Board Members. Good wishes to Ms. Flowers. I'm Lenora Faulkner, fighting for education excellence for all students and for my dad. Dad turned 100 years old January 7th, 2020. He was a Hellcat fighter pilot during World War II, fighting for God, country, and public education. He did not fight for virtual schools or charter schools. The aviators arrived at the U.S. Naval Academy in 1945 for graduate school in aeronautical engineering. Soon, it was we three. We three celebrated VE Day, VJ Day, and the 100th anniversary of the Naval Academy. We attended the 1945 Army-Navy Game in Philadelphia a month before I was born. There were 102,000 in Philadelphia. It was the game of the century, the bad news is Army won. On January 3rd, 1946, me three was born, one-three. I always think of the Trinity and the Holy Spirit. At that time, America's spirit and the Holy Spirit were the same. In God We Trust was a must. I am the oldest of 80 million baby boomers. That is a big responsibility. President Bush, Trump, and Clinton were born in '46, 66 days from each other. What a crew. We need to pray for them. They each had interesting education legacies, like Trump University. I started school a year early because my mom was in an iron lung when I was three, so I'm the first to graduate from high school and college as a baby boomer, the University of Florida in 1967. My dad always said I was a global girl, always in a man's world. I am well-respected at the Tampa Veterans Hospital. I go there for 20 years, my son's been sick there, and I go five days a week, and they know I come here on Tuesdays, so there was Tuesday with Mari and Tuesdays without the veterans' mom. In 2009, I was asked to go to South Africa with the National Science Teachers Association through People of People. I've asked to go all over the world, but I can't leave my son, and I adopted 300 children in Uganda. Dear Ms. Faulkner, as Senior Science Director at Maine Mathematics and Science Alliance and President of the National Science Teachers Association, I asked you to go to South Africa in 2009. God bless you guys.
Thank you.
War is a racket. General Smedley Butler, sick. The ROTC, sick. Yeah. Here's the headline, Troubling Thaw, the Arctic Is Entering Uncharted Territory As It Warms, U.S. Climate Scientists Warm. And then this latest headline, 64.9 Degrees, Baumie, Antarctica Isn't Oxymoronic, The Tip Of The Iceberg For Global Warming Trend. See, that's what happens when you do stupid things, like your portable classrooms, and, well, we can, we can orient these buildings any old way. Well, here's the Primera Un Sustainable Building, and here...
here's the Anasazi Indians that knew over fifteen hundred years ago that you orient only one way. The buildings don't go just any old way. Any old way. In discussing green design, a bit of historical perspective is useful. It's important to understand the idea is not new. For millennial, most buildings were of necessity sustainable. It is only in the past century or so, as cheap energy, large seats of glass, and air conditioning appeared, that architecture lost its moorings and forgot the ancient truth that the most important building covenants are directed by the earth. And are you so lost? You are evil, plain and simple. Sick is what this place is. Drinking water out of little bottles that take more water to make than they hold. You can't give good buildings. It's malfeasance. Yeah, we'll put these portable buildings just any old way. This is evil, what's happening here. Yeah. Future is bad. You're responsible.
Our next two speakers are Don Richter and Beth Hovind.
Good morning.
Good morning, still morning.
Yes, it is.
Uh, board members, Dr. Grego and staff. My name is Don Richter. I live at two-three-five Timberlake Drive in Palm Harbor. And I want to thank you for allowing me to comment today. And today I'd like to address the sale of the school board property at Klosterman Road. I represent a group of concerned homeowners surrounding the property. We only found out incidentally about ten days ago about the, about the sale of this. It's a kind of a big thing in our area. It's gonna impact us greatly. yeah, it, I guess it was under a bid period and that ended on Friday. And um, I'm told that there were three bids received. We feel that any developer will more than likely rezone this to a, to a high-density land use. And um, I was kinda cruising your workshop meeting minutes and that subject of rezoning was brought up in that too. So it is, you know, probably will be done. It is a big concern to us. The area is surrounded by single-family homes. And we feel like, um, a high-density housing would overburden the already busy roadways. There's an abundance of wildlife on the property, some classified as threatened. There are many reasons why we would like to, this to remain in undeveloped, um, land. But, you know, there's not enough time to go over it. So our, my hope, our hope today is for the school board to hit the pause button for maybe a month or two, to allow our group to investigate various options of funding so, so the county could obtain this land. Just to the north of that land is a Wildlife Management District called Mariners Point. The north edge of that property is contiguous with that. And we would like to see, and a perf, you know, the perfect solution would be for the county to buy that land and to add it on to that, uh, conservative area. So, um, couple, couple things that, you know, Florida Forever, Sierra Club. That, uh, so we need a little time to pursue these things because it doesn't happen quickly. It was, um, mentioned real quick about global warming. In this day of losing trees and global warming, every little bit counts. It's only fourteen acres, but it's right in our backyard. So I would encourage the board to, today, to just delay the sale of this property for a period of time to allow our group to, um, explore different options. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hi, my name is Beth Hovind and I'm kinda with him. So you might hear some of the same information. Um, we have six different neighborhoods in our area who are concerned about the sale of this property. And I looked up the, you, some of the regulations. The nineteen ninety-seven Florida statute, talking about properties sold by education institutions, says that a board shall take diligent measures to dispose of educational property in the best interest of the public. And your own school board policy, nine point two zero one, says the Real Property Management Department may recommend disposal of any board-owned land through a lease with the option to purchase or a lease/purchase agreement to any person or entity for any educational purpose as the board determines in its best interest. Now, this thirteen-acre piece, and I hope you've all taken a look at it. It is like an original piece of Florida. It has never been built over. It has never been, as far as I know, had any cutting done on it. I'd like you to go walk through it, take a look at it, and see if you really want to turn this over to developers. But it's right next to a seventy-four-acre conservancy owned by the county. The animals and the plants do not know that it's school property versus county property. They share it equally and we share the animals. We share the coyotes when they're there. We share the wild pigs when they're there and the birds and all the other animals. So the, the most appropriate use for this is to remain the way it is, rather than to have it developed. So we're begging you to do that. The bid went out on January seventeenth. The bids were due on February seventh. This did not give us any time to organize prior to the end date. And we were not even informed. Not one neighbor was told this sale was going to happen. We only found out because Don happened to have noticed a bunch of people around the property. And we feel the least that could have happened would have been to notify the close neighbors, the adjoining neighbors, that this property was even available so that if they could find an educational use for it, we might have had a chance. So we're talking to the Sierra Club, we're talking to Preserve Tarpon, we're talking to our, our state legislators, we're talking to our federal legislators, trying to see if there's any money available for the purchase of this to retain it as a conservancy, rather than to have it built. So we're asking you, give us a couple months to see if we can do it. And I think based on your own policies, it's in your best interest to take a chance on this becoming an educational conservancy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our next two speakers are Wanda Jenkins Trejo and Mike Gandolfo.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Wanda Jenkins Trejo. I'm the legal guardian of a student in Oak Grove Middle School. And I'd like to speak to you about information and, um, of controversial material being introduced at Oak Grove Middle School by, uh, teacher, Mrs. O'Hare. The book is titled, The Hate You Give, by author Angie Thomas. Uh, my overall concern is that the material is not age-appropriate for the grade level it's being presented. The book debuted as a young adult bestseller. And it is a young adult novel based on, based on history and some types of realities. Crossing the lines between fiction and reality for this age group as young as eleven and twelve years old needs a great amount of consideration because sometimes they can't differentiate between fact and reality and fiction when the, the lines are so closely intertwined. Um, I expressed concern to the teacher, Ms. O'Hare, the principal, Mr. Barry Brown, and to the executive director of middle school education, Dr. Derain Heinz. It was determined that the proper protocols were used in determining that the material could be approved. That doesn't change the material itself. Just because they used the proper protocols doesn't mean that that material is actually age-appropriate for this group. Um, I don't feel that the committee that approved the material by the guidelines that were set communicated the educational purposes of the material to the community. Wasn't communicated to me properly. An excerpt from the book which was presented as to be controversial in the guidelines did not contain profanity, racism, gang relations, police brutality, code-switching, and sexual content, which is all contained inside the book. The excerpt provided only chapter one of the book, which only contained information regarding a party and the smell of pot in the room. So all these other contents weren't taken into place and wasn't given to parents to make a proper evaluation because all the explicit material wasn't provided in the letter. The permission and notification letter did not provide the option for alternative work and instruction. That was part of the, uh, information. There's a lot more and unfortunately, I'm out of time. But I ask that the school board, at this point, put a halt to the, um, book being entertained into the, um, classroom until a committee can be formed, informed, and the material can be deemed appropriate for the age group. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Grego?
I think Dr. Heinz is back there. I don't know if you've met him face to face, but why don't, why don't, yes. Why don't we have a discussion instead of email? And there he is, right there. If you could just raise your hand, Duane. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I just want to clear up something. I, I wholeheartedly take what you said respectfully. But I just want to clear something up about the characterization of the book. The author is Angie Thomas and his book was considered a twenty seventeen Best Reads book. It is an actuality of what happens in urban life in northern cities. The two characters in the book, they're African-American children. They were attending what we call a charter school up north. They say prep school. And Khalil was shot and killed by a police officer and she held the young man in her arms when he died. The book is about life for students in urban communities. It's not a fallacy. It is not fiction.
It is a fictional novel, ma'am.
It is not fiction. It is life as students oftentimes experience it. Not just in urban cities, but we've seen students killed here in the city of St. Petersburg and Clearwater and Lago, et cetera. So I am not dispelling, I'm not dispelling your concerns at all. I just want to make it very clear that this is a Goodreads Choice twenty seventeen book. It is used as a supplemental component for education and it is to provide another side of life for students. I do believe that if a parent desires that their child not read or participate in a certain piece of educational literacy, I don't have a problem with that because we all have different ways that we would like for our children to be raised and what we would like for them to have access to. Um, I've read the book. I have it. And when the movie came out, I went to see it. So I just wanted to share that because I didn't want anyone to think that things in this book are things that don't happen and probably are not informative for our students. These things do happen. And it is informative for those who would like to open themselves up to perhaps experiencing something different. Again, um, I have no, no qualm with you, ma'am, about your concerns. So that's not why I'm speaking. So please don't take it that way. And I also know that when it came to curriculum, we had on our agenda, and it was publicized, for individuals to go through and, and, and talk about our curriculum. And then, uh, if they wanted to make comment regarding our curriculum or use of curriculum, they could lend comment or whatever they wanted to do. But we do have some teachers that use some supplemental materials. So again, I'm not dispelling anything that you're saying about your concerns. I just wanted to share that piece as it relates to this book that's by an African-American author, talking about the lives of African-American students in urban cities.
May I have a brief response?
Ms. Jenkins Trejo, you've had an opportunity to present. The public gets an opportunity to speak for three minutes.
We'll verify the age appropriateness of this.
Yes, thank you. And we don't go back and forth at this point.
She was just addressing me, so I just wanted an opportunity to, you know, respond to her addressing me.
That's why we're gonna have you talk to Mr. Heinz and have that conversation. And the superintendent said he will look into it.
I've already had a conversation with Mr. Heinz and that made, I was made a point.
Ms. Jenkins Trejo, you have had your opportunity to speak. It is not for the board to have a discussion if they wish. You can speak with Dr. Heinz if you wish, or you may leave.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, Dr. Grego will be looking into it. Ms. Kane, is your comment on this?
Thank you very much.
Yes, I think her, her primary concern was the age appropriateness of the content. And that's something that needs to be, um, perhaps something the board could also discuss in several varieties. This is not the first, um, parent who's come forward with these concerns, both through email or here at our board meetings. And I think that, um, that's a valid, uh, concern from a parental perspective to want more information on that.
Good, thank you. Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Grego and staff. I would like to bring a situation alight that has been extremely troubling to me and which goes against all notions of fair play. The district's Office of Professional Standards, OPS, has a mode of operation that is very similar to that of the IRS. In other words, you're guilty until proven innocent. This attitude could be tolerated if those accused of violating district policy were afforded basic notions of fairness by at least being informed of what it is they are being accused of. But that is not the case. Employees walk into OPS meetings and are totally blindsided by accusations and told of an entire investigation process, one that is, in my opinion, severely flawed and which has already taken place. They are told of allegations and evidence that they must respond to right there and then. Most of the time, it is difficult to recall an incident that took place a month or two previously and to remember it in detail, especially when you're being interrogated by someone who has already made up his mind about you. This fiasco of an investigation is demeaning, demoralizing, and I can tell you from my experience, difficult to watch when employees are interrogated by the judge, jury, and executioner in a four-by-four room. The evidence is often in the form of statements solicited from nervous students and staff members by an administrator who has no expertise in asking probing questions and who often leads witnesses in order to get the evidence that they need to make their case. Meanwhile, the employees' representatives are stonewalled as to what the subject matter of the investigation is and prohibited from conducting their own investigation. Does that sound like just cause to you? District officials claim that they are required, not required, to afford employees or their representatives the opportunity to confront evidence until the time of the meeting. It should be obvious that BCTA feels that an employer's failure to inform employees as to the subject matter of an interview violates the employee's rights. Whether or not the Public Employees Relations Commission will uphold that belief has yet to be tested. But can this board really agree that denying an employee's basic rights is appropriate? The present situation is not acceptable. Employees have suffered the indignity of probationary dismissals in the parking lot, termination without cause, and as in an overwhelming majority of instances, the accusations are deemed to be unfounded. For these employees, the sheer terror of the experience requires a half-box of Kleenex and causes long-lasting side effects that oftentimes prevents them from ever speaking out again. The silencing of educated voices is a dangerous thing, especially for those students who depend on us to advocate for them. So yes, I expect that something will need to be filed so that we can find out once and for all the correct interpretation of this law. Thank you.
Thank you. Simonetti?
Our final two speakers this morning are Corey Givens and Talmage Andrews.
I believe I'm the first one to bid you a good afternoon. So good afternoon.
I believe I'm the first one to bid you a good afternoon. So good afternoon, board members, Dr. Grego, Mr. Herbig. I stand before you, briefly wanted to invite each and every board member, everyone present today, out to the James Weldon Johnson Literary Fest, Literacy Festival, excuse me. I stand as a friend of James Weldon, James Weldon Johnson Literacy Library. And on March twenty-first at ten fifty-nine Eighteenth Avenue South, from ten a.m. to four p.m., we invite the public to join the NAACP Education Committee in our Phyllis Weekly Rise to Read campaign in hosting a guest reader's corner. And this is an opportunity for our school board members, our superintendent, and members of the community to take part in introducing yourself to the community and also reading a book for ten or fifteen minutes with some young members of our community. On a more bitter note, I want to address an issue that many of us probably have read about in the paper, and that is Lakewood Elementary School. That issue is personal to me simply because I'm former educator there. Dr. Carr, you know you hired me there. The state board will determine tomorrow, the education committee, whether or not Lakewood Elementary will stay under district control or be handed over to be operated by a private charter company. I think you all know your mission well than I do and far better than I do. We are here to educate and to equip every young person. Prepare them for college and the world beyond that. But we also have to realize that we have to prepare them for kindergarten, prepare them for fifth grade, sixth grade, and eighth grade in the years to come, not just for college. And to lose Lakewood Elementary will be to lose a cherished neighborhood school. All of our schools are important, not just our magnet schools, but every school. I want to make sure that we don't buy into the hype that we read in the paper. Don't believe everything you read. That's what we were taught. Turnover has decreased significantly at Lakewood Elementary School. Staff morale has increased, on the other hand. We also see that there's been a significant number of academic measures that have seen gains. Six out of seven areas have seen those, as well as there's been a decrease in negative student-reported behavior. For the past two years, since Lakewood Elementary has been in partnership with a private school, private school, school management company, we have seen this school turn around a hundred and eighty degrees. The answer does not lie solely in public control, but rather in public engagement. We need mentors. We need tutors. We need folks who can volunteer their time to save Lakewood Elementary. We have social and civic organizations like the NAACP, other nonprofits and local municipal efforts that are wrapping our hands around our schools and our students. I want you to realize that we support you, and my request to you all as board members is to call your senators, call your legislators, and let them know that we support saving Lakewood Elementary tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, school boards.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
I'm here to address student discipline on the school bus. Ms. Flowers has mentioned something, and Mr. Corbett has said that they are going to put it on the agenda. But school bus drivers are constantly being threatened, bullied. And in the student code of conduct, I was just reading that the situations are applicable in the student code of conduct on rules and regulations and policies that should be implemented in disciplining kids or students on the school bus. So I'll be looking forward to hearing more from the school board meeting when it happens, and I'll see that things do get done.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kane? Okay, Dr. Grego?
If I could, board members, I, I know we usually, even though today's not a good example of it, we usually don't go back and forth, but I want to thank Mr. Givens for his comments. Also want to, as I've expressed to this board, that Commissioner Corcoran came to visit our school district and that tomorrow he will be recommending to the state board a continuation of the district to oversee it. And let me say, it's solely and entirely based on the tremendous progress that Lakewood Elementary School and the community has been making. As Mr. Givens has expressed, the discipline's down. And unfortunately, and I want to talk to Megan because the article made it appear like she took a quote from almost a year and a half ago or somewhere where LSI initially went into that school and not with the conditions of that school today. Also, I know Dr. Corbett had a direct conversation with her prior to that and of which she said that we talked with the chancellor and the recommendation will be, not perhaps, not maybe, but will be, the continuation of the district oversight of Lakewood Elementary School. So this day, and it'll be tomorrow, I'm spending time to put out those fires. I talked with the principal and all that stuff because it, sometimes what's printed, I don't know whether it's Mr. Givens or someone here says you don't believe everything is printed, nor is everything on the internet's true. But I, I can say to you that I've talked directly, and I want to say thank you to Commissioner Corcoran for taking the time on a, I called him on a Monday, or Tuesday, actually, Tuesday morning, and he was in our district that Friday, not a week from, but that Friday. And we toured Lakewood, we toured Melrose, and he wants to come back. And he's bringing some state-level people back because of the work that's been done in our community. So I thank you for your passion because I so appreciate listening to you and in terms of what has been done, and we as a district have to continue to move these schools forward. And we are, and that's what's being seen, to my knowledge, and it is, right from the chancellors and commissioners, that's what will be requested tomorrow. So another news day tomorrow, and we'll, we'll correct this and we'll move on. But I could tell you, and I can commit to you, that there's no lack of urgency at Lakewood Elementary School. Whatever the decision tomorrow, we will continue to work a hundred percent in terms of the, the things of improving the academic focus of that school.
And that goes before the State Board of Education tomorrow.
That's correct. Not, not, I'm sorry if I made that sound.
No.
It's not the legislature, it's the State Board of Education.
The comment was, call your legislators.
Yeah, yeah.
And it said it goes before the State Board of Education.
State Board.
They're meeting tomorrow in Tallahassee. And in fact, so much, I called and asked if I needed to be there. I would take the trip and leave right after this and drive up there to be there to represent Lakewood. And the conversation was, Superintendent, you don't need to be there. This is, this is the recommendation. Rather you stay home and, and run your district. I did not argue with that point. So that's why I'm here. So that's where we're at. Yes. Thank you.
Do you know if it'll be televised like how it was when we went to the meeting in Orlando?
Always.
I just want to watch it.
Okay.
W E D U channel.
All right. There are no other speakers, I understand. Is that correct? All right, then this ends the meeting. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here, and have a good week.
Thank you. It is freezing because even...